Welcome, everyone. I'd like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order. This is May 23rd, 2017, Planning Commission. My name is Les Tillery and I'm the chairman of the Planning Commission. There may be some of you here tonight that have never been to a Planning Commission meeting, so I'd like just to give a brief overview of how the commission functions. The Planning Committee consists of 12 regular members and 12 supernumerary members, I'm sorry, two supernumerary members. Each member is a volunteer appointed by the mayor. The Planning Commission is made up of two subcommittees, the zoning subcommittee and the subdivision subcommittee. Each regular member of the Planning Commission is assigned to a committee and each committee meets separately from the main Planning Commission meeting. The zoning commission meets on this, the zoning committee meets on the second Wednesday of each month and subdivision meets on the third Wednesday of each month, each at 7:30 a.m. on the seventh floor of City Hall. And these meetings are open to the public, just like this meeting is. The primary responsibilities of the Planning Commission are to recommend zoning ordinance amendments, annexation, and zoning requests to the city council, to adopt and apply subdivision recommendations. Planning Commission approves location, character, and extent requests. We approve city master plans. We approve vacation and right-of-way requests, street name change requests, and plat vacation requests. The Planning Commission is supported by an excellent staff and planning department that reviews each item before it comes to us to make sure that it meets all the regulations and requirements for projects throughout the city. At this time, I would like for the Planning Commission members to introduce themselves. Again, my name's Les Tillery and we'll start down here on the right.
Good evening, LaFrida Jordan.
Donna Hendricks.
TJ Mears.
Carlos Matthews.
Kyle Collins.
Gary Whitley.
Sally Warden.
Devin Keith.
Peggy Richard.
Kelly Scrimshaw.
John McMullin.
Jim McGuffey, Planning Department.
Thank you. Okay, so the first item on our agenda is the adoption of minutes.
Is there any discussion about the minutes?
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our agenda, it will be the public hearings. As we go through each item, there's a podium on each side of the room and I would invite you to move to the podium and state your name and address. And we would appreciate any comments that you might have on any of these items that are on our agenda. This is intended for us to have a time to hear your, hear the public comments and we listen to each one of those, we'll take notes, and we will attempt in our deliberations later in the meeting to find out some of the answers to some of your concerns and make sure that any questions you have can get answered. So I would appreciate it if you would be brief in your remarks and if there's something that's already been said once, there's no need to repeat it, we've, we've, we've taken note of it already. So at this time, the first item on the agenda is Ainsley Farms Phase 8, a re-subdivision of Lot 881, a re-subdivision of Common Area H of Ainsley Farm Phase 1A on appeal for a minor meeting held May 22nd, 2017. And Thomas will give us a brief presentation of each item prior to the call for public comment.
Ainsley Farms Phase 8 is located northwest city, north of Lake Bottom Road and west of Research Park. This item is zoned R2A and is approximately 1.88 acres.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Damon Hall. I'm in Lot 247, that would be 8206 Stillwater Circle. There's other residents that's here as well. I speak not as a leader for the group, but one of many to say that the lot, we were told that it would be one common area. We actually discussed this last week on the 16th. Today, I believe, cutting it in half and future idea of building homes there. And that's the per, one of the main purpose of the appeal today. There's an interactive map that's been given by James here. There were other concerns, engineering concerns far as potential flood zone. It was talk about being a Springfield-fed pond, I guess you can say. I have this map here that I can carry to the board. And some of the other residents feel, and it's not many, but just some feel it may be a problem far as for the pool in this area. We already have other issues far as our, we have a fountain in the front of our property that has never worked. I've lived there since December of 2016. Others have lived there for about five years and have had complaints. So there's concern about building a pool there and cutting it in half and making it from one houses as well as this pool. But again, we all want it to be a common area. So other ideas being tennis court, basketball court, playground area. We have some kids here, my kids are not here at this present time, but they're playing in pretty much a mud pit and that graphic shows there pretty much distinctively, all of its mud. So that's why I'm here and I'm speaking today.
Okay, thank you.
I'm Jason Pletch. I live down the street from Damon at 830, at 8314 Stillwater. I went up today, this morning, on Huntsville interactive maps and pulled up the water concerns in that area because one of the neighbors had written about a possible underground creek. My primary concern would be future sinkholes. We all saw what happened on I-65 a few years ago and what's been happening in Florida. So when I pulled up the interactive map, currently right now in that area, a large portion of that area is considered a flood plain. And if we put a swimming pool there, it's, you know, if, if there is an underground creek and they backfill that, what kind of damage does that do or what happens 10 years down the road as the water erodes the dirt away from the back, from the landfill dirt? What happens? So my concern, I don't have a family, but I'm concerned about other people's kids. And that's why I printed the map and brought it in tonight for my neighbors to see as a concern for that area.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name's Art Johnson. I'm from 7619 Asher Drive, it's way in the back. I have no problems with them putting a pool, I have a problem with them dividing the lot.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
My name is Bill Gromison, 7918 Gabriella Drive. I know you don't want us to repeat, but I do want to second, you know, we were told originally when we purchased the home, that was going to be one common area and not subdivided to make more houses. So I would just like to see them follow through with what they told us they were going to do.
Okay. Is, is the developer here or the surveyor here?
I'm Scott DeWort, I'm with Valor Communities. We're the, we're the home builder in this community. And, you know, hey, we're, we're here today, I think, mostly to discuss the subdivision of that parcel. We, we're a little shocked with some of the, some of the questions that are coming to us on this. We have not been here the entire time building in the subdivision. We are aware that this property has been lo-marted and raised and elevated. And I believe that the majority of the purpose tonight is to speak on the subdivision of that specific property. And as far as the intent of it, we're, I'm here speaking as a, as a builder, not the developer, but our focus is to get these folks a pool. And that's what it's all about. So, you know, we're, we're happy to entertain more discussions, but I think tonight, the purpose is for us to have a conversation about whether or not the subdivision is appropriate.
Yes, sir.
My name's Rusty Blackwell. I'm the land surveyor with Goodwill Mills in K-wood. If you have any questions regarding the division of the property.
I don't at this time, but you hang out and we'll get into our deliberations, we may have some questions. Okay. Is anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item two is Chase Creek Park, Track 1 re-subdivision, a re-subdivision of Track 1 of Chase Creek Park.
Chase Creek Park Track 1 re-subdivision was before you in March of 2017 for three lots. This is now before you for a relayout to eliminate one lot to two. This item is located northeast city, south of Highway 72 East and west of Moores Mill Road. This item is zoned C4 and is approximately 18.3 acres.
Is there anyone here to speak on Chase Creek Park? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item three is Huntsville Common Subdivision Phase 2, a minor.
Huntsville Common Subdivision Phase 2 is located northwest city, east of North Memorial Parkway and south of Maston Lake Road. This item is zoned light industry and is being subdivided to take a sign out of a non-conforming parcel. Or a sign out of one parcel that is located in one and putting it into the exact, the actual use parcel.
Is there anyone here to speak on Huntsville Common Subdivision Phase 2? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item four is Seeger's Trail Subdivision Phase 2.
Seeger's Trail Subdivision Phase 2 is located southwest city, north of Interstate 565 and east of Seeger's Road. This item is zoned R2 and is approximately 13.58 acres. This item was before you for a relayout in December of 2016 to eliminate a stub to Old Cobblestone. The stub is still eliminated from, to and from Old Cobblestone and this moves forward with a Phase 2 of that development.
Is there anyone here to speak on Seeger's Trail Subdivision Phase 2? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item five is Village of Providence Phase 6B, a re-subdivision of Lot 4A of the Village of Providence 6A.
Village of Providence 6B is located northwest city, north of U.S. Highway 72 and east of Providence Main Street. This item is a part of the Providence Plut, is located in Transx6 and will be subdivided for eight lots. The Phase 1 6A was final-platted in May of 2015 for seven lots.
Is there anyone here to speak on Village of Providence Phase 6B? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item six is Wildwood Cove. This has been withdrawn, but we will still hear public comments on this item.
Wildwood Cove is located northwest city, south of Harbin Road and east of Waltriana Highway. This item is zoned R2 and approximately 30.54 acres.
Afternoon. My name's Alan Bab. My wife and her family have owned 25 acres on Waltriana, right across from Wildwood Cove, since the 50s. Talking to people in the neighborhood and not speaking for anybody but us, one of the major concerns is not the subdivision, you know, you're going to build what you build, but it's going to be the traffic flow when you add that subdivision. Basically, you're going to have a high school that's proposed right down the road, so a lot of the traffic for that will be on either Waltrana or Nance and you've got Harbin trying to feed that. So talking to your traffic engineer, he was very informative about two months ago. He had done a simulation with all the traffic exiting on, onto Nance in the morning toward Huntsville. I don't see that being relevant because you've got so many subdivisions feeding Nance from across the street that I think they're going to be going out either end. So they'll become an, Waltrana. As it stands now, I leave at 6:00 a.m. every morning to beat the traffic flow. I've got four seconds to get out of my driveway. The speed limit's 45 on Waltrana. The average speed's 52. I've tracked cars doing that. I guess I'm admitting I drove a little fast to keep up with them, figure out how fast they were going, but I was curious. I hope nobody's around, but I've met a lot of our state troopers in our pasture. In fact, I called 911 when a guy was texting and hit a car 75 miles an hour, wound up unconscious in our pasture. So I've seen all the bad part of the traffic flow in that area. I would only ask that we be proactive, simulate all the flows. Personally, I think that to be proactive, we can't hardly afford not to spend the money to look at red lights at both ends of Harbin. I don't see how that flow's going to get out. A lot of the kids in the neighboring subdivision are high school age now and they're starting to learn to drive. I'm 60, I've never had a wreck, but of all the places I've been, including on racetracks with professional drivers, I'm more scared pulling in my driveway or making a left off Harbin than I am on any of that other. So Thomas is helping me, I think he's going to look up the fact, maybe there's in the plans to widen Nance or Waltrana, but traffic's the main concern. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Okay, this one has been withdrawn, but we will leave the public hearing open for a future meeting and I would encourage you to return at that meeting and repeat your comments. Item seven is the retreat. It has also been withdrawn, but we will hear public comments.
The retreat is adjacent to Wildwood Cove. It was previously a part of Wildwood Cove and is overall 37.06 acres.
Is there anyone here to speak on this item?
Same comments.
Noted, noted. Okay, same, same thing, if, we will, it's been withdrawn, but we will leave the public hearing open. And again, I encourage you to return at a future meeting to repeat your comments. Item eight, naming a bridge to be known as Korean War Veterans Memorial Bridge.
This item is located southwest city, north of Old Madison Pike and east of Slaughter Road. This bridge was a part of the completion of Old Madison Pike being widened in November of 2015. This bridge is a name request, has been requested by the Legacy for Known War Veterans Foundation in honor of our Korean War veterans. The foundation's mission is to honor Korean War veterans and instill patriotism in the hearts of Americans' future leaders. At this time, I'll open a PDF. And this sign would essentially be a 24 by 48-inch sign and it would be located in two sections at the Indian Creek. If I go back to the Google Earth map, this is the Indian Creek and also the Indian Creek Greenway. The bridge is here. This is a better view of that PDF. So one sign would be on the westbound and one at the eastbound.
Is there anyone here to, to speak about the naming of the bridge to be known as the Korean War Veterans Memorial Bridge? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item nine under public hearings is zoning. 9A is Beetle Lane Rezoning.
This rezoning request was continued from the April 2017 Planning Commission meeting. This property is currently zoned Highway Business C4. The proposed rezoning request is for Residence 2 District. The petitioner would like to develop a proposed single-family detached subdivision, which is not allowed under the existing Highway Business C4 District zoning. And this property is approximately 37 acres.
Is there anyone here to speak concerning the Beetle Lane Rezoning? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
Staff discussed with the appellant earlier, we'd like to continue this for 30 days to the June meeting.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Do, do we need a?
You can take it up in the regular business.
Okay. Okay. Um, do I, do I need to leave the public hearing open?
Continue.
No.
Continue.
But, but do it during the?
We'll be in.
Do it now?
We both need to make the motion now to continue the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to continue the public hearing for 30 days on this item.
Okay.
Till the next Planning Commission meeting.
Unreadiness, is, is that staff's recommendation that we continue the public hearing?
It was requested by the applicant, staff and applicant to continue discussions.
Thank you.
So we will have another public hearing at the next Planning Committee meeting. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right. Item 9B is Howard Zoning.
This zoning request is newly annexed property. This property is located on the west side of Sockwell Drive and south of Hazlen Road. The proposed zoning designation for this property is Residence 2. This property is approximately 26.6 acres and the property owner has also requested to add three plat restrictions onto this property and I will pull those up. They would like to request a minimum lot area of 12,000 square feet, a minimum lot width of 75 feet, and they would also like to add a plat restriction that there are only single-family detached dwellings permitted on this property.
Is there anyone here to speak concerning the Howard Zoning? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 9C is Clark Zoning.
This zoning request is also newly annexed property. This property is located on the north side of Indian Ridge Drive and east of Didda Landing Parkway. This property is approximately 79.86 acres. The proposed rezoning request for this, excuse me, the proposed zoning designation for this property is Residence 2. This will be a proposed single-family detached subdivision.
Is there anyone here to speak on the Clark Zoning? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 9D is Martin Zoning.
This zoning request is also newly annexed property. This property is currently a single-family detached dwelling. It's approximately .99 acres. It's located on the north side of Kennedy Lane and east of Old Bit Cove Road. The proposed zoning designation for this property is Residence 1B, which is consistent with the adjacent homes that have also been recently annexed within the past six months.
Is there anyone here to speak on Martin Zoning? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 9E is Overton 2 Zoning.
This request is also newly annexed property. This is approximately 14.22 acres. It's located on the north side of Beaufort Drive and on, and west of Old Bit Cove Road. This is adjacent to the existing Overton subdivision and will be an addition, will be additional lots to the existing Overton subdivision. The zoning request is Residence 1B, which is, which is consistent with the current zoning for the Overton subdivision.
Is there anyone here to speak on Overton 2 Zoning? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Item 9F, amend zoning ordinance Article 75, alcoholic beverage establishment regulations.
Planning, Planning Commission members, you should have a copy of this proposed zoning ordinance amendment. This is an amendment to an ordinance that was originally introduced at the April 2017 zoning subcommittee. The public hearing was set last month for today's meeting. There was an amendment to this particular ordinance and that was introduced at this month's zoning subcommittee. There have been three proposed changes to existing language within the zoning ordinance. On the screen, we have the first of those proposals. The definition for retailer's premises, the current definition states retailer's premises means the licensed premises and any adjoining parking areas used or available for parking, whether such areas are owned, leased, or otherwise assigned to the retailer. Planning staff would like to propose that we amend that definition to read retailer's premises means the licensed premise of a retailer. Also, currently, the measurements for distance between retailer to retailer currently reads that the distance is measured from the external boundary of one retailer's premises to the external boundary of any protected use residential district or other retailer's premises. Planning staff would like to propose that that be amended to read that the distance shall be measured from the external boundary of a retailer's premises to the external boundary of a protected use or residential district, the external boundary of a retailer's premises that sells alcoholic beverages for on-premises consumptions only, and this does include all parking areas and facilities, and that the proposed distance be measured from the external boundary to the public entrance or primary entrance of any retailer that is selling alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption. So this would include all of your package and your beer and wine stores. Also, the final proposed change under package sales establishments, this is only for the C4 language is where this particular category applies. Planning staff would like to propose that we change some of the language to reference retailers that have entertainment, that it does not make any other changes as far as distance from any type of residential district, any protected use, or any of the other class type liquor retailers. It just primarily makes a change from package sales, distance changes from entertainment to those, from those that specifically would state entertainment or without, this is only going to reference entertainment only.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak on the amendment to the zoning ordinance Article 75, alcoholic beverage establishment regulations? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Rod Stakely and I am speaking tonight as a trustee of the largest church in this community as well as certain small business owners and establishments in this community. And I speak against the amendment, both to the definition of the measurement as well as the C4 ordinance. Basically, as I understand, the manner in which this entire process comes before you here tonight is there's one retailer in this community that is driving this bus. There is a public policy this board, the city council, and others have adopted for this community that's been in place now for many, many years. There has been no presentation, nor will there be frankly, of any reason to change that important public policy. What you have is a change in definitions that are clearly designed to affect one specific retailer without knowing what the ultimate repercussions or implications on the broader base to other retail locations may be, without appropriate surveying that, or even at this point, this body's ability to predict what the impact will be. Let me address just very quickly certain specific concerns. As I say, when you're going to make a, what I believe is an important public policy change, for example, I'm sure that you all know that if you went into a retail liquor establishment today, you could only buy retail liquor and directly related products. You couldn't even buy a tee-shirt, for example, that promoted that particular retail outlet. That's specifically designed for public policy purposes. That's an end purpose. You go to a liquor store to buy liquor, not to a general-purpose retailer, which is what this is being designed to cover. A big-box retailer that sells everything, that would not only change the public policy that's been in place for years here as to where and under what circumstances retail liquor is sold, it would substantially broaden the market from a competitive standpoint. You're well You're well aware that there are ordinances in place that all of the current retail liquor establishments have to meet, many, many of which are in locations that may not be the most ideal retail locations. But they're there because of the existing ordinances that are in place. What's now being proposed would be to change that ordinance in ways that would specifically benefit one retailer or one group of existing retailers that are not presently in the retail liquor business, put them in prime locations that the other retail outlets cannot be in, and create a competitive disadvantage. I know that's not primarily what you're focused on, but I also know it's not your intent by changing and tinkering with this law without important public policy reasons to impact the viability of a number of small businesses in this community. And that's, that's exactly what would occur in this particular instance. Further, the proposed change is not necessary to serve any public interest. There's no indication that there is an inability to acquire the products that are at issue here. Again, what this is designed to do is to benefit a specific retailer who proposed a statute or an ordinance modification that would have uniquely benefited them. To the staff's credit, they have broadened the base of the language that is involved here, but in so doing, they also create other significant issues throughout the community, which the interests I speak on behalf of are very strongly opposed to. So, again, I guess in, in summary, is there will be a substantial change in public policy without any articulated reason for doing so, designed to benefit one large-box retailer to the detriment of numerous small businesses in this community, and also impact by, why, for example, if you look at the definition, did it ever occur to you to question, why would they change the definition of distance or measurement from the property line, which has always historically been the line of measurement, to the front door of the retail outlet? Why? Because if you had any other definition, the particular interest this is intended to benefit could not benefit. So it shows that even the language chosen was carefully chosen in order to benefit this particular retail. I don't believe that's what this body intends to be in business to do, to try to benefit without some important public policy purpose, the interests of one retailer to the detriment of a substantial body of other retailers who've already have fixed locations, have to play by the rules. And this particular retailer knew when they purchased the property that they now occupy very successfully, I might add. They knew what the rules were. And they're asking this body to assist in changing those rules for their benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stakely. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Alright, that completes our public hearing section of the agenda. I would ask now Kyle Collins to provide the subdivision committee report.
Subdivision committee met on the May seventeenth and the following are our recommendations. Item number one, Ansley Farms Phase Eight, resubdivision of Lot Eight-eight-one, resubdivision of common area H of Ansley Farms Phase One A on appeal from a minor meeting held May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen. Anyone have a motion?
Move to approve.
Is there any discussion?
Yes. Let's start with the discussion. Thomas.
Yes, sir.
This common area, as it presently exists, is one parcel. Could a pool or anything be built there now without any further permissions, permits, regulations?
Well, for a pool, pools have to go through special exceptions through the variance board. The variance board met Tuesday, May sixteenth, I think was the date. That item was pushed forward thirty days. But as it sees fit with appropriate engineering, yes, it could be approved for a pool or subdivided as it meets subdivision regulations and zoning.
So if it were not a pool, as it currently stands today, that soccer field, basketball court, other sporting-related features were mentioned, could any of those other items be built there today without any additional permits, permissions, requests?
As far as.
Yes, they could.
But I don't think that's, that's our discussion. It's just the division of the lot. We don't control whether they put a pool, a basketball court, or any of the other stuff. Our, our purpose is the discussion of the division of the lot only.
Who, who is the current owner of the property?
Vala Communities is.
Are there any covenants with the neighborhood? There's no community association?
There is a homeowner's association, but I don't think it has been completely turned over to the, I can't really speak on that behalf. Like, the Vala Communities could, could very force so, speak more on that, or the GMC.
Sure. Yes, there is a homeowner's association and the, it is under the control of the declarant right now.
Has there been any conversation with the neighbors regarding to this use of property? It's been used as a common space? Was it promised as a common space?
So it, it does show on, on plats that it's a common area, and that's what it is currently. We have brought forth a, a different use for that common area, and it includes a, a really tremendous swimming pool with a splash pad, some fountains, things like that, as well as a pavilion and a fire pit, huge sun deck. It's, it's pretty impressive as a whole. And that's, that's the reason for it. And yes, not only is it, is it large enough for it, but there's also additional space for there to be some playfield for the, the neighborhood to utilize as well.
Question from our board here. Do they have to bring this back before the board to change the plat? If they wanted to change it from a common area to something else?
Well, the, the lots as they, as they force so meet, the only reason is before you now is through the appeal process. This is ran through our minor meeting process because there's no need for infrastructure improvements. All these, infrastructure already exists. So if there's no angle aside lot lines, no perpendicular lot lines, this is ran through the public, through the minor meetings, which the board has deemed myself as a public hearing officer here to, to hear these particular cases for minor meetings, three lots or less, that can be subdivided, that equal the subdivision regulations and also the zoning ordinance, which currently these lots meet.
Thomas, while I agree with my colleague regarding us being here tonight to discuss the subdivision part of this common area, I thought I understood the definition of common area. Would you share with us again the definition of common area as to what can exist there?
In common area, it is an area held in common for the community, but there are no rules against that's a common area being subdivided more. We have no rules against common areas being subdivided additionally.
And so the only, in addition to the subdivision, the only other issue that is being considered through the other meeting was the fact that this is a pool because there's some additional regulations that go with that?
I have no idea in regards to that because that deals with the variance board. This deals strictly with the lots. I'm only concerned with the lots themselves. So the owners requested to subdivide them into two, one for a pool use and second for a use that we are not to assume. And that pool or whatever use meets, or that the land itself meets.
So it seems to, to me, the issue is we have a large area that has been listed as common area. Now we're subdividing it, and what I believe I'm hearing is that half of this prop, this, this large area would be the pool and the play area, the common area, remain common area. And the other part would no longer be common area. Is that correct?
No, at this time, it's still going to be common area. And I guess if that was to ever change, there'd be another similar meeting to this where there would be, you know, different subdivision of the remaining lot. And that would be at the, you know, that would be also at W P Madison's discretion, who is, would be involved in that development. And at, at our present time, we do not have any plans to do that. Now, could that happen? I want to be as honest as I can and look at everybody. I suppose that could happen. But the, the real purpose of this is to go, go back to this meeting that we had just previously. And as we got to see a, a picture of it, you know, there, there is a mud pit there, okay? And it's a mud pit that has been there for six, seven years. We didn't build that mud pit and we don't want it in the neighborhood any more than any of the, of the other residents do. So we are looking at making a massive financial contribution, several hundred thousands of dollars out of our own pocket to make this mud pit go away. The, the, the purpose for dividing it is to say, hey, this is all the space that we need to do this. And that's, that's really it. It's a, it's a massive competition-sized swimming pool that we're looking at doing, as well as tons of other features that are involved in it. And I don't think we have any of those displays tonight to look at, but that's, that's what our hope is, is to put there. Now, might I also say this? Until we figured out a way to financially put, you know, fund this thing, we didn't promise a pool to anybody who bought a house from us. In fact, it wasn't our place to do so. Now, other residents may have received that from previous builders before we got there, but we don't have anything where we have said, we promise you, you're going to get a pool there, until we funded it. And that just recently happened, just before the end of the year. And, and so, you know, again, do we, do we have an obligation to do this? I don't, I don't think we do. I certainly don't have anything in writing that says that we have an obligation to make this kind of investment in the community. And, but we think it's in the best interest of everybody, including ourselves, as we want to make the property values go up and we want to be able to sell houses at a higher value. And, and that's, that's our intent here. And, and the, the project that we're looking at putting on here is, is no small, small investment. This is not some itty-bitty little pocket pool that's sitting in the corner someplace. This is going to be something that folks will talk about and, and, and will be proud of. And quite frankly, it's modeled after multimillion-dollar neighborhoods and that, that far exceed the price points that we're serving here. So it's pretty spectacular. We're pretty proud of it and, and it's, it's huge. And even it being the size that it is and a competition size with all the extra amenities, it doesn't require that entire parcel.
Question for you. The other half of this, the divided lot will still be a mud pit, basically.
Well, we're going to dress it up as part.
That was going to be my question, where you, you know, do you have plans to improve that area for the residents as well?
Yeah, we, we'd be silly not to do that from a marketing perspective, yes.
Thomas.
Yes, sir.
This is Ansley Farms Phase Eight. In the previous phases, are they all final-platted?
Phases, this, the, Ansley Farms has been final-platted in several phases or several replats. But most of them have been final-platted, yes. They are, they all are final-platted, I think, excuse me, as I go to the.
Thomas, there actually could be additional phases to this, but what is out there right now and active and what you guys are seeing is where the roads are. Everything has been final-plated.
So in, in the current number of final plats that we have, is this common area H listed on those? Or do we even, do we have that here tonight to even know that information?
It was, uh, final-platted in Phase One B. It was final-platted originally in Phase One B of Ansley Farms. I think that, I can't quote what date that was. So all the, we did a Phase Seven in about two years ago. These lots were final-platted through GMC and W P Madison. There have been several replats where lot lines were adjusted and that's how you see the multiple phases of Phase One through Eight at this point. This was a part of Phase One B, which we just caused it, called it Phase Eight instead of, so the naming ran with the rest of our filings.
And.
So it can be researched over time.
Okay. And so I get the information that this changed developers at some point. Is there a reason that this common area hadn't already been landscaped or whatever was required in the requirements originally?
That was before my time and I'm not quite sure. We, there would need to be some research and potentially.
I mean, it's, it's, it's been a grass field. It sounds like some mud took over from erosion. It probably has some wet areas. It's obviously been reviewed through our engineering department. It received a site assessment as it was platted or in the old phases. But other than high weeds and maintenance, you know, HOA's tasked with managing this, but it sounds like the HOA's still being managed by the owner. So that would be their responsibility to take care of the site.
Can I, can I step in for two seconds?
Not, not right now. If we, if we have a question for you, we will, we'll come back to you.
Yes, sir.
There was, I have a question. There was a concern about the flood, flood plain. Is this property in a flood plain?
I think some of these properties are within a hundred, with the hundred-year flood plain or point zero-one percent. A portion of the Indian Creek floodway is just behind the rear of their properties. Floodway, okay, there we are. So there we have it.
The property is developable even though it's in the hundred-year flood plain?
Correct.
By raising the elevation of the ground.
Yes, by raising the elevation, one foot above the base flood elevation.
And, Thomas, any future development would need to meet engineering standards, correct?
Correct, yes.
If I may, as I say this moment, your last name is, sir? I'm sorry. I didn't get your last name.
Mine, DeBoer, is the last name.
Mr. DeBoer, as I understand the cut and consolidation, I, you know, urge you, you know, it seems like there might be a split, though a number of these residents might represent either minority or the majority, maybe people couldn't get down here. That there be a conversation moving forward? I'm uncertain if the first time they heard about this was maybe a letter that's sent out by community development, but I just urge you and the development team to have a conversation prior, no matter what happens up here before, of what you guys believe would work in the community and what the community believes they want in the community. I think that would mitigate a lot of the confusion because, again, a lot of these questions are specific to what they want, but you're just trying to propose a cut and consolidation. But I just take that second and just sort of give that as a proactive, I guess, point of reference.
Sure, and, and I appreciate you saying that, but I, I would also like to just go back to how perplexed I am with it. We've done business throughout the southeast. I don't think I've ever had anybody come up and say, please don't build an amazing amenity center. Please don't contribute hundreds of thousands of dollars to our community. And, and, and so we're, we're not trying to force anything on anyone. It's, it's new territory for us. Four thousand houses, new territory for us. It's a first. We're, but we're happy to have a conversation with folks. And, and I'll be happy to do that even, even tonight afterwards. If you guys want to have conversations, I'll be happy to step outside and talk. In fact, Damon and I spent a good hour last night in the neighborhood going through, through conversations and we're, we're happy to talk with them about it.
And commission members also note that the Board of Zoning Adjustment asked for the same task to happen, which is why the case was continued for thirty days, was for the developer and the HOA to have a meeting to find common ground, to understand where everybody is, to hear the complaints, concerns, and try to understand where they need to be moving forward, which is why the board case for the clubhouse and swimming pool will be heard mid-June.
So, but that, that's a separate issue from.
That's a Board of Zoning Adjustment issue, but they're running similarly due to the subdivision.
Right.
But this is strictly a land subdivision. So all this is a division of lots.
And, and the, and the property, and, and the developer owns the property and has the right to subdivide this property.
Absolutely, and meets all the rules too.
And it meets all the rules and can stay as common area for both pieces of property after it's subdivided. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second, ready to vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
All right, uh, I believe the ayes have it. Motion carries.
Item number two, Chase Creek Park Track One resubdivision. Resubdivision of Track One of Chase Creek Park. The committee recommends relayout, repreliminary approval on two lots.
Is there a motion?
Second.
All in favor? Are any discussion? Oh, wrong meeting, that's right.
Thank you, Kyle. I appreciate it. All right, so we have a motion and a second. Now, is there any discussion?
Is, I, I have a question about the last motion. Do you not allow citizens to bring up, uh, their concerns?
Okay, sir, we, we-
There were people standing here to speak to the matter.
We, uh, had a public hearing sec- uh, period in our agenda. It was earlier in the meeting. And I don't, I don't know if you were not in here or just missed it, but we already held the public hearing. Okay, so we're on Chase Creek Park Track One resubdivision. We have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, this is up for final approval also.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim, is it in order? Yes, sir, it is. Uh, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, Huntsville Common Subdivision Phase Two, a minor. The committee recommends layout approval on two lots with a waiver on the angle of the side lot line between lots one and two.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, Overton Phase Two Resubdivision Track One of Overton, presented for final approval on seventy-four lots.
Is it in order for a final? Yes, it's in order with improvements to be installed May twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, and with sidewalks to be installed May twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, Seagulls Trail Subdivision Phase Two. The committee recommends preliminary approval on fifty-six lots.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six, Summer Point, presented for final approval on forty-three lots.
Jim, is it in order for a final? Yes, with sidewalks and improvements to be installed May twenty-third, two thousand eighteen.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Seven, the Village of Providence Phase Six B, a resubdivision of Lot Four A of the Village of Providence Six A. The committee recommends repreliminary approval on eight lots.
Mr. Chairman, I need to recuse myself.
Okay.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Um, the request for naming of the bridge. Staff recommends the bridge number zero-one-nine-zero-zero-zero be known as the Korean War Veterans Memorial Bridge.
Move to approve.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, just for a matter of record, uh, did anyone, did we verify that this bridge didn't have a previous name?
Yes, engineering did verify that there is no previous naming for this bridge.
Okay, and, and the sign, do, is the city responsible for the cost or does this foundation pay for that?
Um, I think that the-
The city is responsible.
City will be responsible for the sign.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, I'd like to now call on Sally Warden to provide our zoning report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The zoning committee met on May the tenth and has the following recommendations. Number one, Beadle Lane rezoning, sixteen-twenty-one. Uh, the public hearing was postponed. So, is there any, and we don't need to take any further action at this time on that?
We took action already to continue.
Uh, number two, Howard rezoning, seventeen-ten. Public hearing was held this evening. The plat restrictions offered were a minimum lot area of twelve thousand square feet with a minimum lot width of seventy-five feet and will be single-family detached dwellings only.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The Clark zoning, seventeen-eleven. Public hearing was held.
Is there a motion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four was the Martin zoning, seventeen-twelve, and the public hearing was held this evening.
Move to approve.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five was the Overton Two zoning, seventeen-thirteen, and the public hearing was held this evening.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number six. Sir, recommendation to amend zoning ordinance Article Seventy-Five, Alcoholic Beverage Establishment Regulations. Section seventy-five-point-one and definitions, Article Seventy-Five, Alcoholic Beverage Establishment Regulations. Section seventy-five-point-two, Measurements, and Article Seventy-Five, Alcoholic Beverage Establishment Regulations. Section seventy-three, seventy-five-point-three, permitted establishments by districts, subsection seventy-five-point-three-point-three-five. Highway Business C-4 District by updating measurement language for alcoholic beverage establishments. And the public hearing was held this evening.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is any discussion?
Yes.
Jim, do you have anything you want to specifically say?
I think, just summarizing what was mentioned and kind of the history of this is it started at zoning committee last month in April. Uh, was brought to us for a modification to the alcoholic regs for a specific user. And the committee's recommendation was to take it to Planning Commission for further discussion. But there were concerns from, you know, from staff and the committee about ordinances for a specific user. Uh, so, we looked at writing an ordinance or modifying an ordinance for a broader stroke of users for the city. And that's, that's essentially what, what is here tonight is a, is an ordinance that can be used or could be used for parcels in the city of Huntsville.
Um, I'd just like to say, as a matter of record, I'm vehemently opposed to doing this. I think that it is such a bad precedent, number one. Number two, I didn't know that we didn't have access to liquor in this city. I thought everybody who wanted liquor can go get liquor. I didn't, you know, I don't believe there's, needs to be a new zoning law to allow one more liquor place, okay? The fact that we are trying to meander and gerrymander, uh, the, um, the zoning for one particular user is, is disturbing to me. I think, uh, Mr. Stakely's po- uh, comments about public policy are well-stated and, and well-received. So, for the record, I am totally against even doing this.
Mr. Chairman, I do have some concerns. I think it opens the door up for other retailers. Um, and this sets the precedence for something that we might not really look at the bigger picture of how it would affect our community. So, I do have some concerns and I was wondering if it, um, I don't know if we have to take the vote or if it needs to be studied a little bit longer or, I mean, I'm just not sure what action.
You know, we had a terrific conversation about this in committee. And I know a lot of the concerns from some of the commissioners were really about some of our current ordinances around the liquor licenses and establishments because zoning, really the whole fabric of our community is changing a lot. And, um, you know, Mr. Chair, could we recommend that perhaps we send this back to committee for, to the department for further study?
Actually, I'd like to take it a step further. Um, I don't think it's, I, I think, uh, the comments made, Kelly hit it on the head. We had a really great discussion at the zoning committee meeting about this. Uh, when the, the original recommendation was brought to us, the one that was withdrawn, we had some huge concerns about it. And what it did was shed light on how archaic our current alcoholic beverage regulations are, especially in, um, in the dimension of measurements. And we needed, I, I've said at the time, we need to open this whole thing up. I don't know if any of us have the stomach to open the whole thing up and deal with it correctly, but quite honestly, this is just, this isn't even a Band-Aid on what it is. You know, the only thing, I take exception, Mr. Stakely, is that you mentioned about positive public policy. I'm, I'm not convinced what we have in front of us in our alcoholic beverage regulations is positive public policy anyway. Um, obviously, over the years, probably when no one in this room was even involved in it all, there were exceptions made. And if you read it carefully, there are obviously cases where we made policies for one individual in this. I mean, it's just right there. I, we probably could drive around and figure out which one it was. Um, so what I would like to do is, is charge the, the planning department to go back and really take a hard look at everything. Um, our current policy as it stands, as you mentioned, we didn't know what the, what the negative outcomes could be, the unintended consequences. I can guarantee you, in our current policy, there are some unintended consequences that are negative for this community as it is written now. Uh, so I think what we really need to do is look at it in a very grown-up, positive sense. We have done this before recently. Not long ago, we looked at some of, when all the craft breweries were popping up. We took a hard look at those because those were not allowed in our current regulations. And now, um, we made some changes, some very positive changes for our community, and it's all worked out to the good. I think everyone will, um, agree on that. So, regardless of what we do on this particular amendment, I really think we need to take a hard look at, at what we have on the books now and try to get, um, some of the archaic language so it makes our community, um, in a positive light.
Sally, so, so to everything that you said, uh, to put in form of a motion as a friendly amendment to what Kelly offered is to, to send this back to planning staff. Who, thank you, staff, for bringing this forward with the previous amendments and to encompass this into our entire, kind of, our big-picture planning for our entire area as to how, as you said, Sally, deal with alcohol in an adult, grown-up way. So, I would like to offer that friendly amendment to, to Kelly's, uh, motion.
Okay, so, I need some advice here. Yeah.
Yes, the appropriate item before you tonight is the particular rezoning request for the zoning text change to these particular articles. That's what you would be dealing with tonight. And certainly, you know, as a, a part and parcel of, of giving the staff guidance, you could certainly ask that they take into account the whole. But what really is before you tonight is only these particular changes. So, if you want these changes to go back to committee and, or go back to staff and, and for them to deal with it, then, um, that would be the appropriate motion.
And, and the, that motion needs to be revised by the person that made the motion?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know that there's a motion. Well, I think Gerling-
There was a motion.
Kelly made a motion and I amended it.
I mean, I would be happy to revise the motion. I mean, it, I mean, I'm also thinking about time and resources of the planning staff, but to look at the context of measurements as it, which I do think there was a, a terrific attempt at doing that with this. Um, I know it, it, it appears as if with these particular measurements that have been introduced, that this is done for one particular establishment, but this will ha- have an impact on additional establishments in the future. And Mr. Stakely was correct in saying that there are a lot of businesses that are located in areas now perhaps they wouldn't if they had other options. But we also require huge parking lots, which we are trying to change. And we know that we would not be doing that going forward. And this just simply cleans up that language and makes it more door-to-door. So, I do think it's simpler than perhaps what we're making it out to be. But if we'd like to have more study, I can amend the motion to look at it into the context of, um-
All of the-
Of all of the, uh, of, of our current, I'm not, of our current liquor ord- alcoholic beverage ordinances.
Okay, so, so Kelly-
Yeah, can, can we just return it back to staff-
Yes.
-for further review? Let's keep it simple. Revise, I'm going to revise the motion to return this back to staff for further review.
Second.
Keep it simple.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, uh-
Oh, I'm sorry, we got some-
Yeah, go ahead.
The Sockwell rezoning, um, seventeen-fourteen. The committee recommends that a public hearing be set for June the twenty-seventh.
Move to set a public hearing.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight is the Freeman rezoning, and the committee recommends that a public hearing be set for June the twenty-seventh.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, Mr. Chairman, that concludes the zoning report.
All right, uh, invocation and extension of bonds. Jim? Tell, I always get confused right here. What am I supposed to ask for? Recommend the invocation of the bonds listed.
So moved. Second. Second.
All right, uh, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. That concludes our, uh, agenda and our meeting is adjourned. Thank you, members.